Members, we are back in open session and we need a motion to certify closed session.
I move to certify to the best of each member's knowledge that one only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered by the school board.
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Falk. Is there any discussion regarding closed session? This vote requires a roll call vote. Ms. Gilkerson, can you please do a roll call vote for us?
Mr. Breeden?
Aye.
Mr. Cross?
Aye.
Mr. Falk?
Aye.
Chair Lor?
Aye.
Dr. McQuilkin?
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Welcome to everyone. We have a couple of things to clean up before the, I believe the reason most of you are here with us today. So we've got a couple agenda items. The first item is personnel listing and I believe, Dr. Scheichel, you have a recommendation for us.
I recommend the board approve the personnel listing dated May 26, 2023.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. Do I have a motion?
I mean, I move that we approve the personnel listing dated May 26, 2023 as recommended by the superintendent.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Falk. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion to approve the personnel listing as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is action resulting from closed session. Dr. Scheichel?
I recommend to extend administrative leave with A for employee C ending further review as discussed in closed meetings.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. Members, do I have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Falk. Is there any discussion? I mean, is there a second? Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Now, is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, now I believe we're ready for the thing that I think everybody's here for. And I want to do this from the podium, so allow me just a moment to move. Board members, as you are aware, am I still on? As you are aware, last fall, Dr. Scheichel announced his retirement effective at the end of June. Since that time, we have worked to find a new superintendent for our school division. We hired a search firm, BWP and Associates, to aid us in this endeavor. Input was gathered from over a thousand community members to help us develop a leadership profile for our division. This profile was the bedrock of a nationwide search, which yielded applicants from as far away as Alaska. After conducting interviews with internal and external candidates, we have selected the next superintendent. Thank you to each board member for your tireless efforts in this search. And selection, in this search, selection of a candidate and input on the employee agreement, and a special thank you to Dr. McQuilkin for serving as the chairperson of the search committee. Now, it is my deep honor to announce that the next superintendent for Rockingham County Public Schools is Dr. Larry Shiflett. Dr. Shiflett is a visionary leader who will focus on the continued growth of all students. He is genuine, compassionate, and ready to get started in his next assignment. With his connections in Rockingham County, he will bring all segments of our diverse community together. Dr. Shiflett recognizes that parents and community members have vested interest in schools that are safe and engaging for all students. He is committed to working collaboratively with them to make Rockingham County's public schools the best division in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Dr. Shiflett, will you please join me at the podium? And let's give him another round. Board members, I recommend that we accept the employment agreement before you and appoint Dr. Larry Shiflett as superintendent of Rockingham County Schools. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that after thorough review and discussion over months of earnest recruitment, due diligence, and interviews and discussions in closed meetings, the board with pleasure hereby announces, introduces, and appoints Dr. Larry Shiflett as Division Superintendent of the Rockingham County Public Schools Division for a term commencing July 1, 2023 and expiring July, June 30, 2026, and authorizes and directs the chair to execute on behalf of the board the written employment agreement as reviewed by the board a final time during closed meeting today, with the chair having the authority to make minor changes to the agreement with the advice of the board's legal counsel.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we all vote. Is this a roll call vote? Okay, thank you. Ms. Gilkerson, can you please do a roll call vote for us? Mr. Breeden? Mr. Cross?
Aye.
Mr. Falk? Chair Lor?
Aye.
Dr. McQuilkin? Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. We're now going to move on to some information, the information item, and that is remarks from our new superintendent.
Thank you. It is with great humility and gratitude that I accept the opportunity to serve as the next superintendent for Rockingham County Public Schools. This is a tremendous responsibility, one that I do not take lightly. I would like to express my deepest appreciation to the school board for entrusting me with this significant position and allowing me to serve the community where I've lived since my birth. I would also like to thank our entire RCPS community for their support and confidence in me. As I embark on this journey as your new superintendent, I am aware of the challenges and complexities that lie ahead. We are blessed to live in Rockingham County. RCPS serves as a pillar in our community, shaping the lives of our children and preparing them for their future. It is a responsibility that demands our collective effort, unwavering dedication, and steadfast commitment to excellence. I firmly believe that public education is a great equalizer, a powerful tool that can transform the lives of our students. It is through education that we can inspire our students to dream big, to pursue their passions, and to become compassionate, responsible, and well-rounded citizens of our community. To achieve this vision, collaboration and open communication will be the cornerstones of my tenure. I am committed to fostering an inclusive environment that values the opinions and perspectives of all stakeholders. Together, we will create a culture of trust, transparency, and shared accountability that will propel RCPS forward. My top priority as superintendent is to ensure that every student attends a school where they feel safe and where they receive a high-quality education by design, not by chance. It is imperative that we invest in our people, resources, innovative teaching methods, and programs that cater to the diverse needs and interests of all students. By doing this, we will empower our students to reach their full potential and prepare them to thrive in a rapidly changing world. As our students complete their RCPS journey, it is my goal that every student is either employed, enrolled, or enlisted upon their graduation. Furthermore, I recognize the vital role that our employees, all employees, play in shaping the future of our children. Our people are the heart and soul of our schools, and their dedication and passion must be acknowledged and supported. I will advocate for professional development opportunities and competitive compensation to attract and retain the best employees in RCPS. By investing in our people, we invest in the success of our students. Additionally, technology will continue to play a role in our educational landscape. The world is becoming increasingly digital, and we must equip our students with the skills and tools necessary to navigate an ever-changing landscape. I'm committed to integrating technology in the classroom with intentionality and purpose for learning, providing access to modern resources, and fostering an environment that embraces innovation in the five Cs of citizenship, collaboration, communication, creativity, and critical thinking. I am honored to serve as Rockingham County Public Schools' next superintendent. I believe in the incredible potential of our students, the dedication of our people, and the unwavering support of our community. Together, we will create a future where every child has an opportunity to succeed, where excellence is the norm by design, and where RCPS is a beacon of hope and inspiration. Thank you and let us embark on this transformative journey together.
Thank you and congratulations. Now typically, at school board meetings, we like to honor our Character Counts Award recipients. Character Counts is very important to us, and we always acknowledge our students and mention that character begins at home, and we like them to introduce their people. So, Dr. Shiflett, do you have people with you here today?
I have people.
Can you please introduce your people?
People, come on up. Said people will be upset with me when we get home. So, I'm blessed to have a wonderful family, and this is over here Katie in a lovely white dress, my wife. This June will be 25 years. We met at June 20th, I know the date, I got it. We met at Pence Middle School, so maybe I thank Rockingham County Public Schools for that. And then the outcome of such union is our daughter, Mary Ruth Shiflett, who is a 2019 graduate of Spotswood High School and recently a graduate of Bridgewater College and plans to go to the University of Oregon and study biochemistry and work on her PhD in the fall. And then this is our son, Michael, who is also a product of Rockingham County's Public Schools, 2021 graduate of East Rockingham High School, and currently he just finished his sophomore year at James Madison University where he also plays on the rugby team. So, very proud of my family and all that they've accomplished, so thank you.
Don't get too far. Thank you all for coming and thank you, thank you in advance to Dr. Shiflett's family for sharing him with us. Be prepared for seeing him more here and less at home. This, at this point, I'm going to adjourn our meeting, but we're going to stick around for a little bit and do some questions from students. So, meeting adjourned. Thank you all for coming. But now, I would like to call to the podium Joyce Sullivan from East Rock High School to ask our first question, and do we have a microphone?
Hello, my name is Joyce Sullivan, a senior from East Rockingham High School. The East Rockingham students would like to know, what is your short-term goal as the new superintendent? Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce.
Thank you for that question. It's a wonderful question. So, short-term goal for this summer and maybe more than one, but coming right out of the gates is working with our school board and making sure that we are a strong, united team and working together. Unfortunately for us on the board, Mr. Breeden, for good reasons, is going to be leaving us July 1, and so we have a gap. And so, a lot of institutional knowledge and leadership goes when he goes. And so, we'll be working, we'll hopefully have a retreat this summer, early summer, and talk about our governance and how we're going to work together as a strong team, right? There's an old saying that a chain is as strong as its weakest link. And so, we want to make sure that all of our team members are strong and that we are supporting each other and doing what's best for our students. So, right from the get-go, it's going to be about working with our team to serve our students. And then to think about what we need to be doing more immediately this fall. I plan to schedule meetings with our principals, our directors, and our supervisors, and have discussions around student safety, which is a priority, as well as student achievement, and to create some plans moving forward to make sure we're addressing those. And then to put in place a process to begin looking at creating a five-year plan for the future of Rockingham County Public Schools. And so, hopefully start that later this summer. And then just personal goals, just to be visible, to be out in the community and go places and meet with community members and have conversations about what we're about in Rockingham County Public Schools. So, thank you for that question.
Our next question will be by Delisa Hamm. Are you ready, Delisa?
My name's Lisa Hamm. I'm from Turner Ashby, and I'm a junior. I was wondering, how do you feel about the use of cell phones in schools?
Oh, wow. Give me an easy question. No, that's a great question. Thank you. It's an important question. I know we made some adjustments to our policy, JZK, this past year in terms of cell phones, and a policy that I would support. So, here's the simple of it. Our community is supporting us, paying tax dollars and supporting schools so that students learn. So, that's the number-one goal with students coming to school, not to be on their cell phones. So, in the learning process, we know you have to pay attention and you have to focus. So, when students have cell phones, access to cell phones during class, when it's instructional time, it's hard for them to pay attention and to focus. So, I would fully support our current policy to say, during class time, we don't need cell phones. We've got to focus, we've got to pay attention, we're here to learn in the hallways, during lunch, other times, that's appropriate. But in the classrooms, we've got to pay attention. No one can learn when they're distracted, right? There's a myth about multitasking. It's not true. You can't multitask. So, great question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Delisa. Next, we have Grayson Long.
Hello, my name is Grayson Long, and I'm a junior from Turner Ashby High School, and my question is, do you prefer standard SOL tests or other means of assessing student learning?
Wow, that's a great question. So, when it comes to standard SOL testing, there's probably not a whole lot of options we have. The Virginia Department of Education sort of administers those. However, what I would say is that we need a balance of assessments. So, there is a time, an appropriate time, to assess students on just their pure content knowledge of what they know, right? Their knowledge base. But then also think about the spectrum where we move to more performance-based assessment, project-based learning, where we get students to go deeper in their learning and apply their knowledge, okay? But we can't get the cart in front of the horse. We can't start applying knowledge that we don't have. So, I believe in a balanced approach, and we'll do the best we can with SOLs and try to meet our accreditation when we have to and where we need to. Good question. Thank you.
Thank you, Grayson. Next, we have Karen Granados.
Hello, I'm Karen Granados. I'm a senior at Broadway High School, and my question is, are you willing to consider different scheduling options for the school day to support mental health and needs of students?
That's a great question, and part of my current role has been assistant superintendent of innovation. I've always welcomed discussions about how we can do things differently for the betterment of our students. So, I would welcome conversations. As we look at our five-year plan, I'd welcome conversations with our students, with our faculty, staff, community. Is there a better way to approach a schedule to help our students with learning and also to help them with their mental health? We had some of these conversations pre-COVID and got a little bit derailed with that pandemic that hit us, but absolutely, we would welcome that conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Karen. Next, we have Derek Pence.
Hi, my name is Derek Pence, and I'm a senior at Broadway High School, and my question is, what are your ideas and plans to advocate and support mental health and learning needs for all students?
Thank you for that question. So, I think currently, you know, under the leadership of Dr. Scheichel and the school board, we have worked to create a tiered level of support where we've really focused on getting people in place to support our students. And I'm 100% and committed to following through and continuing that practice. It's very, it's much needed. Things such as sources of strength at the high school, right? At the middle school, we've added some restorative specialists, strong starts for our young elementary students. So, my goal is to continue those things, but also to measure those things. Are they working the way we intended them to work? Are the outcomes what we wanted? And make adjustments as needed. And then, as I have kind of stated, right, when it comes to learning, we have to be very intentional about our practice, and it's got to be by design. And we want to make sure that all students have an opportunity to learn and achieve. And so, we'll be very focused on that. I've, in the last few months, had lots of conversations with our director of special education, Melissa Bentley, and we're talking about how we can be better and making sure we're meeting the needs of all kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. Next, we have Isabel Florrie.
Hi, I'm Isabel Florrie. I'm from Spotswood, and I'm in the MTC Architecture class. Spotswood's question to you is, will you continue Dr. Scheichel's initiative to incorporate students' voices?
Absolutely. As a teacher, a few years ago at Pence Middle School, I used to have my students give me feedback on my teaching, right? It wasn't part of a summative evaluation. It was part of, I want to be better, and I need the people that I'm trying to serve to tell me whether or not I'm missing the mark. And so, absolutely, some of the project that Dr. Scheichel instituted with the high school students focusing on a project determining what makes a school safe, caring community, we need to continue those efforts and get feedback from our students to determine, again, are we meeting your needs so that you can be successful? Thank you.
Thank you, Isabel. Next, we have James Rios.
Hi, my name is James Rios. I am from Spotswood High School, and I currently also attend Massnet Technical Center. My question to you is, how will you handle drug use in county schools?
This is pretty simple. Don't bring drugs to school. So, we made some adjustments to our policy this past year, JFCF, and pretty rigid consequences when you bring drugs and alcohol to our schools. But when you think about it, this is not a complicated issue, right? We're making too much of it. Don't bring alcohol and drugs to school. Therefore, you will suffer no consequences, right? It's not really rocket science. Don't bring them. And if you do, and we catch you, we're going to follow the policy because we don't need that contaminating in our schools. So, thanks for the question.
I'm going to hold you, James, for just a second. Just to be clear, that was a question presented for James, and James, you're a Skills USA officer, are you not? Can you please share with the group a little bit? Use the microphone.
So, here at MTC, I'm a Skills USA state officer. I ran for it back, I think it was last month around that time. I attend a DSO program here with Lee Smith. He's a great teacher, and yeah, I just like being a part here at MTC. It's a great program here. And I'm glad and I'd like to see what you do for our county here.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Stay tuned.
Next, we have Trinity Doffelmeyer.
Hello, my name is Trinity Doffelmeyer, and I am a senior at East Rockingham High School, and I attend the dental careers class here at MTC. My question for you is, new studies indicate the negative impacts on students from excessive screen time usage of digital devices. What measures can be taken to balance traditional hands-on learning experiences with device usage?
Oh, great question. Prior to the COVID pandemic, I mean, it just kind of derailed some things, but we were having conversations with our instructional team, our ITRTs, about some recommendations for use of technology in our classrooms, because we were getting a little worried that, you know, some of our younger kids were missing recess to hang out on their iPad, right? And that's not the purpose of recess. And so, we were kind of developing, creating some recommendations, and then COVID hit, and we said, you need your device all the time now because this is how we're going to learn for a little bit. And so, I think we need to get back to that place to talk about the appropriate use for technology in school, absolutely, from K to 12. One of our statements early on, Dr. Scheichel and I worked on this together with digital conversion, was the technology is a tool that you use, right? And you need to determine if it's the right tool. It's not always the right tool. So, as a teacher, you determine what is it you want your students to learn, then determine if technology can help them learn that. I always said, I never want to go to a PE class and watch, you know, see students watching videos of people exercising, right? That's not the purpose of technology. But there is a place for it. And so, I think we, absolutely, we have to be intentional about that and how we use it so that it's getting us the results that we want. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Trinity. And our final question of the day comes from Stephanie Schweigert.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Schweigert. I'm a senior at Broadway and an active FFA officer, also on the Federation level. My question is, an easy one, are you going to be good?
That's an easy question? So, that's a great question, actually. I like that. I hope July 1, I'm good, but I don't want to live there. You deserve better than that. And my goal is to work for excellence. I hope I can inspire every employee in Rockingham County Public Schools to work for excellence because that's what our students desire. That's why I'm here. When Chair Lor asked how I want it to be announced, I said, I want to be in a school with our students because that's why I'm doing this job, is because of you. And so, I want us to strive for excellence. Recently, Ms. Sullivan, a seventh-grade English and Social Studies teacher at Elfton Middle School, shared this quote with me that I love. It says, "Good enough is the enemy of excellence." And I have no desire to be good. I want us to be excellent. Thanks for that question.
Thank you, Stephanie. Let's give all of our students a round of applause. Our students were actually students here at MTC, and we appreciate and thank you so much to MTC for hosting us today. Actually, when we discussed how we were going to do this, it was Dr. Shiflett's recommendation to come to MTC because MTC is special to all of us. But thank you so much to our students who presented. They were all selected by MTC, like I said, and given questions from their home schools that we asked Ms. Gilkerson got together for us, collected from the different high schools. So, thank you to every student in every high school that submitted questions. Now, I believe we're getting to the end of our session today, of our live stream, but we're going to continue to look forward to working with Dr. Shiflett and working to make Rockingham County Schools excellent. So, thank you all for coming. Thank you all for listening. So, thank you all for coming. Thank you all for listening. This is going to conclude our live stream for today.